I'll let him get seated.
Thanks for the patience.
Hey, Kevin.
Hey, shirts.
Yeah, I like this shirt.
Me too.
I did not get the memo about new shirts.
It was a mail only thing.
Okay.
Call order meeting for the Normal Town Council for May 20th, 2024. Please call the roll.
Merrickus?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Byers?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no public commenters tonight, so we go to omnibus agenda items that will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item per discussion. Ms. Smith?
Item K.
Ms. Lorenz?
Um, I have a couple to pull and I don't have my agenda in front of me. Thank you. Um, so I would like to, in addition to K, that's already been called, L and M that follow. And then, um, C, D as in Delta, and G as in Gulf. Thank you.
Motion for approval?
Whoops, move approval.
Second.
Items on the omnibus tonight for approval are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May 6, 2024, a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of May 15th, 2024, a motion to approve recommended Harmon Arts Grants awards, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to start excavating for the Normal Area Drainage Improvements Project in the amount of $197,316, a resolution to award the bid for Clarifier Number Two Gear Drive and Mixers Rehabilitation Project at, uh, uh, to G A Rich and Sons at a total cost of $152,900, a resolution to accept bids and award a contract to start excavating for the 2024 Sump Pump Discharge and Storm Superimprovements Project in the amount of $209,700 and an associated budget adjustment, resolution to accept bids and award, uh, contract to real construction, the division of United Contractors Midwest for the Adelaide Street Improvements from Striegel Court to College Avenue, and that a project is in the amount of and a resolution conditionally approve it, reapproving the final plant for plat for Sunset Commons at the southeast corner of Airport Road in Shepherd. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Before I say aye, I have to excuse myself for any bills I incurred. I raised my hand, but I was missed.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris.
That's okay. Um, with that understood, aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. Those items are approved. Item D is a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the purchase of the 836 Technologies CINT Commander Two System. Sounds like a video game.
I know.
Uh, satellite networking package and eight, uh, 836 Tactical Video Phone from 836 Technologies for $33,744.11. Ms. Lorenz?
So moved, please.
Second.
Lorenz?
Thank you. Um, a question I have surrounds the, um, the reason for waiving the formal bidding process. I didn't really ascertain from the write-up, um, a clear reason why that is, and I just wanted to clarify that. Um, but I, I just want to say that I am also pleased to see that something as important as this technology is being, um, updated and not allowed to get too terribly far out of date, although it's been a number of years since we have updated it, so I'm glad to see it's, it's happening. Um, so I don't, um, deny the need for it, but just wanted to clarify the reason for waiving the bidding process.
I will try to explain, and then if we need further detail, I'll defer to Chief Petrilli, who's in the audience. This particular equipment is to serve a specialty team within the police department. And, um, as I understand it, the department did seek some proposals and tried out various pieces of equipment and found this particular equipment to be the most useful for their purpose, and that's why we are requesting, um, a motion to waive the formal process.
Okay, and is that, remind me again, the reasons that are acceptable for waiving? Is that one of them where it's, um,
Counsel, counsel can, I'm sorry to interrupt. Um, counsel can waive for any particular purpose.
Okay.
You know, counsel has the authority to waive the, the procurement policy.
Okay.
So.
Typically, maybe legal can provide, or if you, you know, um, what are the three or four reasons that are kind of standard?
Sure. There are a number of, uh, reasons that staff can seek waiver of a formal bidding process, or staff can itself go through the process without the bid process. Uh, just to start off, this really doesn't even fit any bid situation, so when we go out for a bid, it's, we're asking vendors to give us prices or quotes on the same piece of equipment. This would be more like a professional RFP where we're looking at different types of equipment, so there's not an apple and apple comparison that we get in a bid anyway. Uh, what happened in this scenario is there's a limited number of vendors that, so we approach the vendors that do this type of, have this type of equipment and look through their services. So it wouldn't actually ever be formal bid because we didn't say we want this specific equipment. Vendors give us a price, so it's more like an RFP. So really, bidding process probably didn't apply to it to begin with.
Right. We didn't, we didn't have a set, um, listing of specifications for the type of equipment. They were trying out equipment to see what works and went from there.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you for that explanation, clarification. That's all.
Further on this side, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item G is a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing the execution of a contract for design and technical services with Golf Course Construction and Renovation LLC for $40,000 to expand the putting green and to build a chipping green at Ironwood Golf Course and authorizing the purchase of related material. Ms. Lorenz?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Lorenz?
Okay. So thank you again, and probably it's going to sound like a theme. Um, so again, similar question, uh, as to why we're waiving the formal bidding process. This one kind of alluded a little bit stronger that perhaps, um, the longstanding relationship with that one person that's done a number of the, um, projects for the golf course over the couple of decades. Um, was that the reason why, again, a kind of a uniqueness of professional services?
Uh, that is true. We're asking counsel to waive the formal process for procurement for a consultant in this case. Um, we have used Mr. Denton in the past. He's familiar with Ironwood Golf Course, and we figured that would be worthwhile to continue that relationship on this project.
Okay. All right. Again, glad to see, um, some of the improvements to the course and expansion of putting green and a building of a new chipping green, so, uh, glad to see us investing in that asset. That's all. Thanks.
Further on this item. Ms. Smith?
I, I just wanted to highlight that, um, in my email exchange with Ms. Reese, she, um, confirmed the fact that we're getting design services and an overall plan, but a lot of the, the work of carrying out this, uh, project is being done internally by our own Parks and Rec staff, which is also a dollar-cost savings.
Further on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. Uh, item is approved. Item K is a resolution authorizing the execution of a pedestrian underpass agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for the construction, maintenance, and use of the proposed pedestrian underpass at Uptown Station.
So moved?
Second.
Smith?
Um, in, in my review of the, uh, documents with this month's council pact, I, I noted that items K, L, and M all relate to the underpass, and I was asking in, in, again, in an email exchange with the city manager, um, if, if there are more of these kinds of behind-the-scenes, have-to-get, um, projects lined up before we actually begin the construction, um, because that's really what's happening, um, in K, L, and M. And how close are we to having the contract come before us?
Well, we're, we haven't issued the project out for bid yet, but yes, items, um, let's see, K, L, and M all are related to the underpass project, and these are basically pre-work before we can get going with the project. We have a number of steps yet to go. Um, but this, what we're asking counsel tonight is to, and this particular i- item, item K, it's in agreement with Union Pacific Railroad, and it, um, identifies all of the criteria that we have to work with and how the project will, uh, move forward, since the project will occur on their property. So that's all the details and all the maintenance and all the, um, obligations that we will have, and that's item K. And then I can address items L and M as they come along.
Okay. Thank you.
Further? Ms. Lorenz?
Yeah, um, thank you to Ms. Smith for pulling this item. Um, I did note also that it's, you know, the first of maybe many, um, things that will start rolling in here for this, um, you know, significant project. Um, I want to just clarify and make sure I understood, uh, first of all, the agreement was, was very long. And, uh, you know, kind of note to self, the railroad's a, um, I know you said it was a boilerplate agreement, but it was, it was detailed. Um, so, um, if I understood it correctly, um, this agreement is taking, it's going to cost us $300,000. We kind of broke it into like two parts, but totaled about $300,000 to basically enter into this agreement. One was to review something, and the other was to, um, not having my notes in front of me here. Um, so roughly $300,000 to enter into the agreement, and, um, so my question on that is, was that $300,000 anticipated, and is it, has it been, um, planned as part of the, you know, multimillion-dollar project? Is this, was this planned as a line item of it? And then, um, if I understand another thing correctly, it looks like there is a five-year, um, I think they called it a seasoning period, which to me kind of sounded like, uh, as, as things would settle, um, you know, after the build, five years, um, we would be on the hook for any repairs that may, um, creep up, that would be, um, a deficit to the railroad. Is that an accurate summary of those items?
Sure. I will, um, address the first point regarding, um, the, the cost. This, this proposed agreement is in fact comparable to what the town has adopted with Union Pacific on other past projects. We, the building we're in currently, you know, we, we did a lot of work with the platforms on railroad right-of-way. We've done sewer projects where we've gone under railroad, near railroad, and had agreements with Union Pacific, so this is common. The, in terms of the proposed fees of $317,200, that is budgeted, it is part of our project budget. So we did plan for that. Um, and then in terms of the, the five-year timeline, I'll defer to Mr. Day on that specific, uh, timeline. I do want to point out that the, the agreement between the town and Union Pacific is for basically the life of the structure.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Day, can you comment on the five-year?
Yeah, there is a section in there called, it's deferred seasoning, which just says that it covers a number of issues such as tunnel caves in and, or, uh, site and sort of issues like that that people interference to their operations.
Right, and they used a language, maybe this is typical of them, of like significant cost. You see that? They used it several times. It got me nervous.
Um, reimbursement for extra costs in painting embankments and subgrade.
Without asking me to-
I don't see a significant-
Okay, that's okay. They, they drove home the point to me as I was reading it. Took note. Um, so, you know, what might we anticipate? Can we even answer that question?
In terms of-
Potential, what, what might we be on the hook for in terms of, um, any kind of restoration or repair that inadvertently might happen?
Right now, I don't believe we're anticipating really any, um, just based on the way that the plans are and the way the project's going to be constructed. Again, this is boilerplate that has to do with any of their projects, so it's the same if we were putting a sewer underneath the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Same language would be in there. Uh, so we're not anticipating any special or unique liability stemming from this project.
Okay.
It also has, like any agreement, where we are entering onto their property, you know, insurance requirements and coverage requirements, so they just want to make sure that we have the appropriate liability insurance should something happen that, that we need to, uh, repair.
So then the last area that I, I just couldn't keep up with the, with the language of the, of the exhibits, but exhibit B as in Bravo and D as in Delta, they were basically the same. One was for us and one was for any external contractor. Can you summarize what it is that they are, um, holding us to on, in those exhibits?
Uh, there's quite a bit in both. Um, so this is like, you mentioned a large contract with several parts. It's one of those. Or so they got a little tiny contract up front and everything's back in the exhibits. Uh, generally for both cases and both exhibits, it's a right to enter onto their property for the work. It's an allocation of risk, it's cost. Basically, the railroad's going to let us do this construction, but it's not going to come at any cost to them. Ms. Reese said there's insurance requirements, indemnification requirements, uh, flagging, and then just general coordination of how the work's going to be performed.
And I would, and it, it basically covers everything from soup to nuts in terms of what, what could happen on the property, what they expect of us and our contractors to be on their property. Um, you know, it's, it's, they're casting a very wide net, as you would expect, so.
Okay. All right. Um, well, I just wanted to make sure that I read the whole thing, so thank you for those answers.
Further on this item. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item L is a resolution waiving bids and authorizing an agreement with Serbin LLC to create an alternate, uh, alternative fiber optic cable routes to serve the town facilities for a total amount of $49,258.31. Ms. Lorenz?
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Okay, so, um, actually I do understand why the, uh, this one, the bid is being waived, um, to work with Serbin. However, um, this one and foreshadow on the next one, I'm wondering if both of these, uh, this one in particular for L, the $49,258, um, it wasn't, was an anticipated cost as well, or is that something extra that's being born?
No, this was an anticipated cost. Um, we've known this project was coming. We've just been waiting for the appropriate time to bring utility relocates, including Serbin, to council for approval, and also waited to get their formal pricing until we were, you know, ready to move forward with their work. So Serbin, this particular action item is not only relocating the fiber, um, creating an alternate route, but they will, um, provide service to a couple of town facilities. That's why we have not only the reroute, but also the, the monthly ongoing cost, so.
Okay. And then does that, um, does, as they repl- as they place this alternative cable, does that, um, pull out the other cable that is being replaced and, and save any monthly cost from it? Or, or are they going to be parallel? Because there was some talk of redundancy with both of these.
Right. Um, with, well, they're not putting their fiber back in the exact same place because the, the underpass will be there, but there will be, I believe, a re-installation of fiber to continue serving the town facilities, and then the, um, the redundancy is, is also what's new, so there will be additional services.
Okay, so on the reinstall, that's where the redundancy comes in place. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item M is a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ameren IP to temporarily relocate a 34.5 KB line for the construction of the underpass project at Uptown Station in the amount of $164,920.20. Ms. Lorenz?
So moved, please.
Second.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. Um, please construe all my questions as just a sheer excitement for this project, okay? It's finally coming after many, many years. Um, so, uh, again, similar broken record going to sound here. Was this $164,920, um, $164,920 expense anticipated and, um, part of the original estimate?
Yes, this is a budgeted item and it's included in the project budget.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Further on this item. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, just a quick one, uh, as infrastructure in Uptown, um, as we see opportunities like this to relocate, my question, I, uh, asked it, and you probably answered it, but I didn't have a chance to get to my email today, so I'm going to ask it out here is, uh, was there a consideration of, uh, when, uh, the project's over of putting this power underground?
Uh, yes, I appreciate Mr. Adu, who gave me the information today, and, and when you do have an opportunity to log in, you will see there is an email responding.
I'm sure.
Um, there, it, it was discussed, but Ameren, um, believed, you know, Ameren's position is that is not a reasonable solution. It is a, um, high-power voltage line, and they were unwilling to consider under, undergrounding.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. And that resolution is approved. Uh, that concludes our omnibus agenda. We have one item of general orders, and that's an ordinance rezoning property in the town of Normal at 416 West Bulla Street. Move approval?
Second.
Question on this item. Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. The ordinance is approved, uh, under new business and ordinance authorizing a purchase agreement for a parcel located at West Shelbourne Drive and Charlotte Drive in the amount of $10. Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Just for some, um, stormwater improvement that we're working with, uh, an issue that's been a problem for a long time. We're finally getting the last pieces put together to get this project done.
This, um, staff has been working on this for a number of years, actually, and I do want to take just a moment to not only thank staff, Mr. Adu, Mr. Comfort, who've been working on this, but also Christchurch, who has made this generous, um, I guess, offer for the town to purchase this property for $10.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lorenz?
Just a, um, a question that I just thought of at this moment. We have heard from neighbors for other reasons along that block of Charlotte. Um, but I think from time to time, there has been the issue of drainage, um, but, but I think maybe in a different part of the block. But does this address some of that?
It, it, Mr. Adu can jump up and correct me if I'm wrong. This, this particular, um, acquisition of this property allows us to install some drainage solutions that should positively impact the standing water that people have been talking about behind their properties.
Okay.
It does not affect the sump pump issue, sump pup issue, that's the other drainage issue that we are hearing from that particular resident, but the standing water in the area behind the houses, that is, this is the solution.
That's good to know. Pass that along. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Merrickus?
Aye. The ordinance is approved, um, and we have another item on new business tonight, and that is a presentation by student members of Youth on a Mission.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, uh, unless I zoned out, there was an item on general orders. Seven rezoning property.
We approved it.
I'm sorry.
Come back.
Zoned out on the zoning.
Yeah, zoned out on zoning.
Zoned out on zoning.
It was. He wasn't ready for that.
Good evening. My name is Paige Malloy. I'm the program coordinator for Youth on a Mission.
And my name is Tracy Freeman, retired high school teacher, and I assist Ms. Malloy. We are going to give you some brief, brief overview of the program for those of you that aren't familiar with Youth on a Mission, those here with us tonight that aren't on the council, um, and of course, those watching at home. Youth on a Mission is a youth council from the town of Normal. Um, the students in this program spend about seven months working on a project that they care about. Uh, back in October, they spent a whole weekend with us here in Uptown Station, um, coming up with ideas that they wanted to see in our community, researching those ideas, and then sharing those ideas with a lot of people that we'll get to talk about tonight. Um, so they spend a lot of time, they give up a Saturday every month, and again, a whole weekend in October to spend time with us.
Part of their work in the initial meetings is fun. As you can see in these, we're playing some games, getting to know each other. Anyone who's worked with young people realizes that the laughter they share, those friendship, those friendships and walls fall. They're from three different high schools. Many of them do not know each other when they first come into the program. And so the bowling, the playing at the Discovery Museum, the minute to win it, where they get a chance to laugh and drop their barriers to get to know each other have built some pretty solid relationships and some pretty impressive projects.
The core of Youth on a Mission is to engage students and local government and teach them about the municipal services and, and honestly, the process of it all, since it's a little bit complicated. The pictures that you see on the screen here are from their trip to the Illinois Municipal League's Annual Lobby Day. They met a number of people and shared their projects with a number of elected officials, including Lieutenant Governor Juliana Streton, uh, our representative, uh, State Representative Sharon Chung, and State Senator Dave Kaler. Um, as you'll see in the top right, they got to run into some of you in the middle of the day, um, and take a quick picture as well.
We also had an opportunity this year for something new, which was a trip to Washington, DC this March. We attended the National League of Cities Conference in the District of Columbia. Was an incredible experience. The students were amazed that some of the speakers brought into that conference. I understand many of you have attended that in the past, and it is an amazing experience. Um, however, the part that really stood out to me, if you'd advance the next slide, was getting to see the offices, but again, the students getting a chance to interact with other student youth groups from all around the country. They had special programming just for these youth commissions. They deliberately, um, if you look at the top right corner, they deliberately grouped them on project topics and let them see different ways different cities get to deal with, um, some of the projects and ideas that they're working on. They informally shared their projects. They danced, they ate, they had a great time, again, connecting with people from all around the country, and most importantly, bringing things back to their own local high schools. Um, many of them talked about the connections that they could make to what they were learning in their government classes. For example, the national, they then saw the state, and then, of course, the local.
We'd like to thank the number of people that listened to these students and gave feedback, um, on their projects. A number of the elected officials that they got to speak with are on the screen now. Um, but as well, at their retreat weekend, they got to hear from the CEO of the Dayton Boys and Girls Club, Crystal Allen, who encouraged them to come up with ideas and want to see a change in their community, uh, for the positive direction, whatever that may be for them, and inspire them to come up with their own ideas and figure out what their passions really are. As somebody who's gotten to hear these projects over and over again for about seven months, I can tell you that they resulted in, in a, in a pretty good, uh, presentation you'll get to see. Um, we'd also like to thank the town staff that helped us out throughout the year, the fire-
They've put a lot of work into these projects, and hearing what you have to say and getting your attention is really important to the civic process for the youth. So thanks very much. With that, we'd like to introduce our first group of students, the Refreshing the Human Relations Commission.
Good evening, Town of Normal council members. My name is Falco Rabinizla, a senior at Normal Community High School.
I'm Nikhil Kavtarpu, a sophomore at Normal Community High School.
I'm Joyce Chung, a sophomore at Normal Community West High School.
We are thrilled to be here in front of you today, presenting on our project of refreshing our town's Human Relations Commission. As we walk through our presentation, we strongly urge the Town of Normal to consider refreshing the Human Relations Commission. As we continue in the progress of our town, it's important to realize that the dynamics of our town are changing. While the current Human Relations Commission may have worked 17 years ago, it's our job to represent our residents the best way we can through encouraging a diverse commission.
Our three main goals to this project are representing our residents the best we can through incorporating a diverse commission, redesign the social equity summit, and also reevaluating our ordinances.
To begin, it's important to evaluate the demographics of Normal, which we make apparent on this slide. As it is titled, these are the top five largest demographics of Normal as of July 2023, less than a year ago. Note that 22.8% are a minority race in a town of approximately 53,000 residents. Adding on, 11% of our town identifies as part of LGBTQ+, and those with disabilities are 5.1%.
So why do these statistics matter? What do they symbolize? They symbolize the makeup of our town, the raw numbers of the residents who live here, and more importantly, one major aspect of what we need to refresh about our commission. According to Division 10.2 of the Town of Normal's municipal code, the Human Relations Commission reflects a diversity of backgrounds within the community. I had the opportunity last year to sit on the Human Relations Commission meetings and help plan the annual social equity summit. It was an enriching experience where I learned a lot, but with anything we do, it's important to see how we can improve for the next year. In terms of diversity, we had white, African-American, and South Asian individuals be part of this commission. Both Hispanic and East Asian residents were left out of this equation in the last HRC. It's important to consider, we also want to make sure that disabled and LGBTQ+ individuals also have a voice. Is three demographics sufficient for reflecting a diversity of backgrounds? It isn't, and the town should at least represent all six major demographics in our town to ensure that each and every community is being heard. That is the first thing we need to do to even start the process of refreshing our commission.
After this process is complete, the next area to refresh would be the Social Equity Summit. While our last one was somewhat successful, there wasn't much resident engagement with the two sessions, but with that, that isn't a hard fix. We simply just need to advertise the summit to all our residents, which would speak more our residents to be engaged and active with our sessions. By diversifying our committee, we are looking to see that the majority of minorities are represented. But at the, these social equity summits, it's important to incorporate racial topics as well to allow residents to feel that they want to be more involved. Therefore, we're naming it as the Racial Equity Summit. Social and racial issues being highlighted will only increase the engagement as we are covering both issues at one summit, and truly designing it for our residents.
Lastly, we want to reevaluate our ordinances, specifically Division 10.2 of the town's municipal code. The last change even made to the Human Relations Commission ordinance was made February 5, 2007. This was before I was born, 17 years ago. A law has changed since then, as it's been over a decade. This is the reason why it would be significant to go through the ordinances and see if anything has to be added or taken away. For example, a diversity, equity, and inclusion statement would be beneficial to add, showing that the Town of Normal has a true commitment to all their residents. An example of this statement would be, the Town of Normal Human Relations Commission is dedicated to fostering an inclusive, equitable, and diverse community where all individuals feel valued and respected. We believe that diversity enriches our community and enhances the quality of life for everyone. Our commitment to DEI is at the core of our mission to promote justice, fairness, and equal opportunity for all. The Town of Normal is dedicated to building a community where diversity is celebrated, equity is achieved, and inclusion is the norm. Together, we can create a more just and equitable society for all. This statement further clarifies the town's plan with the commission and dedication towards DEI practices.
Through these three main goals, the Town of Normal by 2026 can refresh the Human Relations Commission for the betterment of our town. This will then directly increase engagement, allowing more and more of our residents to be involved with town activities and further spread the agenda of becoming a model community where people would want to live. Thank you for your time, and we hope you take our suggestions into consideration. These following slides are our citations, and we are now open for questions if there are any.
Questions for this group? Comment? Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. There we go. First, nice job. I know it can be intimidating coming up here and presenting for us, but I agree, Ms. Malloy, you're certainly polished and been practicing a lot. Just wanted to say, great job, and I reflect back when I was your age, and I would never endeavor to do anything like this, I would be too afraid and nervous, so I applaud you on your courage to take something like this on, but one question of substance, though, you gave us data and pointed to its importance. Can you share with us where that data came from?
Yeah, it came from Census, it's right, census.gov.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's in the citations.
That's okay.
Yeah, part of it came from state profiles right here, the Movement Advancement Project, that's where we got the LGBTQ+ and disabled data, and the rest of the data on that first slideshow about demographics in terms of race came from census.gov.
Awesome, so a lot of good research skills developed in the creation of this work. Awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Drew Rabinizla, and I'm a freshman at University High School.
My name is Sophia Boyer, and I'm a junior at Normal Community High School.
Today, we'll be sharing our presentation, Unity Through Public Display, highlighting the diversity in our town through public spaces. Growing up in the Bloomington, Normal area, the diversity of our community has played a huge role in our town. Through the very recent Holy Moly event presented by NC Houston's South Asian Performing Arts Students, sharing my Indian culture with others has allowed me to feel that people have became more educated on my diversity, and that I in turn have been more educated on theirs. However, our town needs permanent public spaces that symbolize the diversity in our town. Our mission to this project is to create unity through public space, thus fostering a sense of belonging, appreciation, and unity for all residents of the Town of Normal.
We plan to achieve this by implementing the following in Normal, surveying the town to find out the different ethnicities and cultures that make our community and represent their identities through a physical piece of representation, which in turn could serve as an educational tool and as a way to engage the community.
The Town of Normal is very diverse. According to the US Census in 2020, our majority race is 78%. This is more than McLean County itself, which is more around 85% of the majority race. This shows just how diverse our town is and how we need to celebrate this diversity.
So how would physical representation unify Normal? For starters, creating a public space that represents the town's diversity would allow all community members to gather, share, and ultimately celebrate their different cultures. Public spaces would stand as a permanent markers of the town's commitment to celebrating diversity. As we know, public spaces play a crucial role in uniting communities. Places like Uptown Circle, a highly visited space in our town, allows people to connect with each other while also giving those people a physical space to enjoy. By implementing a permanent public space that celebrates diversity, the Town of Normal will be highlighting the diversity in our town that makes us unique.
This can also be an educational tool for the town. Our collection will promote awareness and will also spark questions about inclusivity and diversity in our town. A lot of the high schools in our town happen to feature things that celebrate their diversity, but the problem with theirs is often that only high school students can have access to them. However, if the Town of Normal is able to use an accessible spot to open a permanent public diversity display, more people will be able to access. This will cause people to learn more about diversity from the ages of youth to adult, from destinations for schools, for summit meetings. This will be very important to the town and will also show them how diversity in public display through it can helpfully educate people. And different schools and students will be able to work together and open their cultural celebrations that are mainly only run by their schools up to the entire public, which would engage more members of our communities.
Lastly, our physical spaces of diversity would encourage engagement within our community. For example, the use of a cultural performing arts space would encourage the public to interact with performers and learn more about the cultural importance behind such performances. Such spaces can serve as vibrant hubs where people from different backgrounds come together, fostering understanding and appreciation for diverse cultures. All in all, implementing public spaces strengthens our community, the Town of Normal as a whole.
By blending physical representations that highlight the diversity within our town, the Town of Normal will engage the community by creating a meeting space for people to all meet together and encourage diversity, an educational tool that promotes unity within our community by sparking questions about diversity and inclusivity in our town. And finally, it will make it so the Town of Normal will be clear to citizens that people from all backgrounds are welcome from our town. Thank you for your time, and we hope you take our idea into consideration. We are now free for questions.
Questions? Comments? Ms. Smith?
I, in conversations with some members of your group, I understand that there's been some interaction with the committee that is looking into the mural for the underpass space, and I was wondering if you have any ideas as to whether or not that mural could serve to satisfy some of your targets of having a physical representation of the multicultural aspect of our community and all of the residents.
I think it definitely could. I don't know if we've really had much opportunity to talk to them, but that could definitely be something that could fulfill that.
And I am not involved in that process, and I know that they are working with it at this point in time, but I would encourage you to make sure you connect your thoughts with that committee so that they have that feedback from you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is our immigration initiative. My name's Richa Shukla. I'm a recent university high school alum, and I will be studying at Columbia University this fall.
My name's Angel Yin, and I am a current junior at University High School. So to begin, we're going to start off with our mission statement. So we strongly urge the Town of Normal and council to consider adding the following immigration initiatives to the top of the agenda. As we continue to progress as a town, the dynamics socially and economically are shifting, and addressing cultural diversity is the best way to represent our residents while also inviting future residents into our community. To begin, we'll start off with our principles. So number one, we aim to provide more resources by bringing more foot traffic to cultural causes. It reduces potential hesitations to coming into our community. This would incentivize immigrants to become more involved in the community, whether socially or economically. Two, we have immigration awareness and education. There is currently nothing in our town's mission statement or current policies addressing the welcoming of immigrants and diverse culture to reduce potential stigma. This stigmatization stems from deeply rooted xenophobia throughout the United States, which is formed from othering or us versus them terminology, something we need to address as a town. Additionally, we aim to make Normal a more welcoming place in correlation with the growing influx of immigrants migrating towards suburbs by inputting immigration initiatives through town policies like implementing anti-xenophobic legislations or providing funding for immigration education, or even sensitivity training in certain workplaces. Town of Normal can bring a new level of diversity to the community.
So getting into the reason why we wanted to focus on immigration, so because of the impactful contributions of thousands of immigrants and newcomers, the Town of Normal would not be the same as it is today, and it is our desire to increase immigration awareness and appreciate the value that they bring to our society. So as an economics major, of course, I had to bring the economy into this, so first, I've decided to compare the data between the United States, Illinois, McLean County, and the Town of Normal as a whole, and also bring in the proportion of immigrant populations as well as immigrant contribution to the economy. So as you can see, after taking a look at the census data, we gathered that the Town of Normal approximately has a 20% immigrant population, which is greater than McLean County, Illinois, and the United States as a whole. And we also got the figures for percent, sorry, monetary contribution to the economy per category. So as you can see, for the Town of Normal, we didn't have enough of a sample size, so we couldn't get data for that, but in McLean County, we have $1.7 billion, in Illinois, $47.8 billion, and in the United States, $1.3 trillion. This highlights the incredible contribution that immigrants have brought to various communities throughout the United States, in addition to our community of Normal, Illinois, and focusing on representation, making us feel welcomed, and focusing on the incredible accomplishments they bring just serves to show how important this initiative is. So moving into our goals from this initiative, we have three major goals. So first, we want to talk about inclusion, so the town has to implement policies to make Normal a welcoming place by working with the Human Relations Commission to call out discrimination and foster a sense of unity through diversity among all community members. Second, immigration education. It is imperative that we educate residents on immigration in order to debunk myths, diminish perceptions, and stop negative assumptions about all immigrants. Finally, we need to focus on resources for immigrants. We need to increase partnership with current resources and advocacy groups who can better assist with meeting the needs of all immigrants throughout our community of Normal, Illinois. These are our sources, and thank you for your time. We'd love to hear some questions.
Ms. Lorenz?
Interesting presentation and topic. In your analysis, did you reach out to the immigration project?
We did not reach out, but we did mention it in kind of when talking about resources, potential resources in our community, we kind of talked about how working with local nonprofits, like the immigration project, it highlights the services and like legal services that they can provide towards immigrants, which also welcome like more individuals to come into our town.
Right. They provide a tremendous set of services.
And it is our desire to increase immigration awareness and appreciate the value that they bring to our society. So as an economics major, of course, I had to bring the economy into this. So first, I've decided to compare the data between the United States, Illinois, McLean County and the town of Normal as a whole, and also bring in the proportion of immigrant populations as well as immigrant contribution to the economy. So as you can see, um, after taking a look at the census data, we uh, we gathered that the town of Normal approximately has a twenty percent immigrant population, which is greater than McLean County, Illinois and the United States as a whole. And we also got the figures for percent con- or sorry, monetary contribution to the economy per category. So as you can see for the town Normal, we didn't have enough um, of a sample size, so we couldn't get data for that. But in McLean County, we have one point seven billion dollars, in Illinois forty seven point eight billion dollars, and in the United States, one point three trillion dollars. This highlights the incredible contribution that immigrants have brought to various communities throughout the United States in addition to our community of Normal, Illinois. And focusing on representation, making the making us feel welcomed and focusing on the incredible accomplishments they bring just serves to show how important this initiative is. So moving into our goals from this initiative, we have three major goals. So first, we want to talk about inclusion. So the town has to implement policies to make Normal a welcoming place. By working with the Human Relations Commission to call out discrimination and foster a sense of unity through diversity among all community members. Second, immigration education. It is imperative that we educate residents on immigration in order to debunk myths, diminish perceptions and stop negative assumptions about all immigrants. Finally, we need to focus on resources for immigrants. We need to increase partnership with current resources and advocacy groups who can better assist with meeting the needs of all immigrants throughout our community of Normal, Illinois. These are our sources and thank you for your time. We'd love to hear some questions.
Ms. Wret.
Interesting presentation and topic. Um, in your um, analysis, did you reach out to the immigration project?
We did not reach out, but we did mention it in kind of uh, when talking about resources, potential resources in our community. We kind of talked about how working with local nonprofits, like the immigration project, it highlights the services and um, like legal services that they can provide towards immigrants, which also welcome like more individuals to come into our town.
Right. Um, they provide a tremendous set of services, um, as does Prairie State Legal. And um, so I would encourage you to, uh, if you do any follow up, to follow up at those two organizations.
Ms. Smith.
I can't help but notice when I go to a doctor's office that they have the information about the translation services they have available there and there are a number of languages um, for which translations are available to help with medical services. Did you happen to, in your research for this, um, compile any data on just the number of languages that are spoken regularly regularly by immigrants in this community?
So not exactly that kind of data, but thank you for suggesting that. And I think whenever I've gone to a doctor's office personally and seen translators or I of this summer, I'm going to volunteer as a translator, mostly they're in three major languages rather than the various languages spoken in our community, but that's good insight.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for this presentation. Uh, a question on the um, uh, data, just from my own understanding. The uh, eleven thousand nine hundred immigrants in McLean County, does that figure include Normals' ten thousand six hundred or is that separate from that, which would be the city of Bloomington then and surrounding uh, more rural and small towns in McLean County? And so, yeah, if you don't mind, I'll fill uh, fill the void with rephrasing the question. Um, uh, so the eleven thousand nine hundred from McLean County, the immigrant population, does that include the ten thousand six seventy one that's specific to the town of Normal or is that McLean County minus the town of Normal, meaning it'd be that eleven nine is made up of just the city of Bloomington and the surrounding area?
I'm pretty sure it in, I think it's minus that, but I can like double check.
Okay, no, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, thank you all for Oh, there is one. I thought I thought there were only three.
Good evening, Town of Normal Council members. I'm Pevon Ready, a sophomore at Normal Community High School.
And I'm River Stokes Dorsey, also a sophomore at Normal Community High School.
The town of Normal currently has over three hundred homeless people. And according to the U S Census, over seven point seven percent of the population lives in poverty, highlighting the economic disparities prevalent in our community. This is significant because the town of Normal seeks to promote better living conditions for all people. We wanted to aid the town in this initiative because in the comprehensive plan, the town states it wants to quote, reduce economic inequality and promote opportunity for all residents. Clearly, this goal is not being fully addressed.
We will help address this goal by implementing a micro community in our town. Our micro community is a safe, diverse and self-sustaining home for all. Our micro community would be a great addition to our town, not only because of our homeless population, but also because we are a college town and it would allow students who cannot afford housing at its market rate a place to stay. This complex would include housing, workforce development opportunities and an incubator center.
Here are some pictures of what our micro community could look like. One micro community we could take a closer look at is the Hidden Grove Apartments in Homestead, Florida. Some features that they have but are not limited to include having washer and dryer connections and onsite daycare, a computer room and connections to local businesses.
Another micro community we could take a look at is the upcoming Hope Village in the Champaign-Urbana area of Illinois. They proudly state that Hope Village is a unique tiny home community that offers housing solutions for adult community members who are most at risk of homelessness and are medically fragile in the Champaign-Urbana community. It also says that they provide the residents with lots of resources and a network of support, including dedicated case management to address the conflict, the complexities that impact an individual's well-being and their ability to sustain a healthy life. We can emulate this and make Normal a safer place for all. We can work with local businesses and nonprofit organizations to help our micro community flourish. Home Sweet Home Ministries and Midwest Food Bank produce a lot of waste that can easily be repurposed and fund our project. This will not only make the town of Normal more environmentally sustainable, but also bring in partnerships from around, from across the town. These agencies will still be able to provide services so that the people who relocate still have access to the same opportunities, like Connect Transit and Salvation Army. Our desired outcome is a self-sustained, safe place for people to live with workforce development opportunities for a while until they can get on their feet and live on their own.
As the influential urbanist and activist James Jacobs said, cities have the capability of providing something for everybody, only because and only when they're created by everybody. We can help make Normal a safer and more welcoming place for everyone with the implementation of a micro community. Thank you. These are our citations and we are now open to questions.
Questions? I know you were going to. Go right ahead.
Well, you've struck a nerve with me. This is a, this is a hot topic and it's actually something that in my day job, I work very actively with. Um, as you may be aware, there is a tent encampment of thirty five or so campers uh, adjacent to Home Sweet Home. And there's actually a waiting list to get into that tent encampment. Would you like to come to a meeting tomorrow morning at seven thirty? We'll be discussing this further. Um, but in all seriousness, um, the 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 micro community or the the shelter villages that you talk about, there is uh, a a solution that Home Sweet Home has in their pocket, um, ready to do, um, that's by a company called Palette. And um, you know, it's it's possible. It does take zoning changes. It takes some political will to do that, um, because we might see it. And so, um, you know, there's, there is a lot to this. I'm really glad you brought this up. It is a hot topic for this community. Um, I don't know if there's any follow up, but maybe in a a future iteration of this project, I would encourage you to um, think beyond Normal. Um, it's a community issue. I often say that just because the tent encampment is in Bloomington, that doesn't make it a Bloomington problem. It just so happens that they are adjacent to the shelter there that is in Bloomington. So um, this is very much a community issue. And I dare say, I don't know as much about it, but I dare say it's probably a county-wide issue, not just something that um, is within the corporate limits of the city. So um, you're on, you are on to something and um, I was just at Peoria on Friday. They don't have exactly what you're talking about in terms of the micro community, but they have a very well-networked group grouping of um, buildings, sixteen, twenty um, or so units each that make up um, essentially low barrier and no barrier shelter. And um, it does provide private spaces. It's so it's not a congregate shelter, but it is got, it has the same idea of what you're suggesting here in terms of um, separate facilities. So um, I applaud you for taking this issue up because it is very relevant. So I could go on and on, but I'll let others talk. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McCarthy.
I'll be brief. Always interested in data, so I'm gonna ask you a data question uh, upfront. Uh, when I see descriptive di- data of the town of Normal, I'm always curious. Uh, so upfront, you talked about uh, three hundred and seven point seven percent, if my memory serves, from your, one of your first slide. The seven percent, seven point seven percent, I believe it was below poverty level, I believe was your statement. Okay. Um, and and it's perfectly acceptable to say, we're not sure to the answer to this question. Um, does that, I'm assuming that would include college students in that figure?
Yes, I I believe includes everybody, so that would include college students.
Okay, which, we have a unique population here. Many of our students do in fact live below the poverty limit because they're full-time students, so those numbers, looking at the town of Normal can be difficult. This are not suggesting that we don't, that's not a problem here, but uh, when we talk about those kind of statistics, I'm always curious. Thank you. Uh, and Mayor, I don't know if we're gonna get a shot, but to everybody, uh, nice work. And I echo the same statements I made to the opening uh, presentation. Um, to come up here is not easy in front of us and and pitch and and then have to face uh, questions you didn't know were coming or what they were impromptu and try to be able to answer them is is no easy matter. So uh, very uh, good job with your presentations and and thank you for your time and your energy and sharing that with us.
Thanks for that segue there. And and I would say, excuse me, um, there seems to be an overarching theme in 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 your project here today. And I think uh, what you, what you have recognized as an issue uh, in Normal is also an issue in Bloomington Normal and an issue in McLean County and an issue nationally. And I think it's a credit to your generation that this is, this is a, at the forefront of importance to you, that we have the, a diversion and or a inclusion and equity and um, and we're a diverse community. And we we do things, we try to do things, but it, there's always more that we can do. And and your awareness and your suggestions help us do that. It really does. Uh, your presentations were were really well thought out, uh, well presented. Uh, it scares me how good you you are as orators here compared to us up here, but uh, the work you did was, it was pretty amazing and is is really spot on the issues that we face as as a nation. And so, um, don't think that this fell on deaf ears. This will make us start thinking again. So thank you for your presentations tonight. Before taking a motion for adjournment, uh, are there concerns or comments?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, just a couple of quick ones. One, uh, on a couple of different occasions, I learned that is National Public Works Week. Um, and take the opportunity to give an attaboy. I don't know why he's turning red back there, but uh, um, just an opportunity to highlight. I I believe the uh, theme is advancing quality of life for all. And when you think about all the work uh, that Public Works Department's doing, specifically ours, to keep our community uh, rolling along smoothly, all road jokes intended. Um, but uh, I take an opportunity to call you guys out specifically for uh, all the work you do. Um, we here, uh, we're the recipient of a lot of community comments when things are going well and it's a lot because of the Public Works Department. So just wanted to take uh, an opportunity to say thanks for all your work during Public Works Week. Uh, also just wanted to uh, in uh, this week of excess heat to uh, do a shout out and a reminder that Fairview Pool is opening this weekend to give us a little break from the hot weather and uh, an opportunity for everybody to cool off. Thanks, Mayor.
Nick, this weekend is Memorial Weekend and several weeks ago in the Panograph, um, in the Veterans Column, it was pointed out that they are looking for volunteers to help um, place wreaths on graves of veterans. And so if you will look up that column, I believe it was the first Monday in May, you'll find the contact information for that. And on a less somber note, solemn note, uh, the Penguin Project is putting on their play the following weekend, the first weekend in June. It's SpongeBob the Musical. I encourage you to get a hold of a synopsis because it will not make any sense. It does not follow and the usual antics of of Patrick and SpongeBob. So um, but this is an opportunity to see some really wonderful work by our uh, players uh, who are partnered with mentors that really helped put on a a dazzling production. And it's at U High Auditorium, the Stroud Auditorium, Friday night and Saturday night at seven o'clock. And the matinee on Sunday afternoon, I believe, starts at two. I encourage you to go. And they, there is a pay what you can night for their dress rehearsal on that Thursday. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Aye.
McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Eric, um, excuse me, Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Coos?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.